I'll now call to order the April tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn to Councilman Nick Harden and ask if he'd lead us in prayer. Please remain standing for the pledge.
Lord, we thank you. Thank you for another opportunity for us to come together and to lead our community and come together to make sure that we get it right, Lord. We thank you so much. We ask that you watch over our community and keep us and guide us, Lord. We thank you. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome.
Let's start off with a little point of privilege. And what a privilege it is. I'm going to recognize Tristan Stewart, who is the new Miss Valdosta High School. Tristan, if you don't mind standing. And Tristan, if you don't mind joining Richard Hardy, the city manager, and myself at the podium. Got one more to recognize. Oh. Celebrate thirty years. About thirty years. That's not so scary. Pocket air, my mom did absolutely anything thirty years ago. Are you still? He thinks it's so. Come forward. Yeah. And it's thirty years to the day.
Wow.
Yep.
Dirty, dirty.
Act like you like it. Eric, is that family?
Yes.
All right, Council, you've had time to read the minutes from the March twentieth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to that? Hearing none, I'll approve that by acclamation. We'll move on to item three, awards and presentations. This one's a presentation by staff on recommendations for revisions to the land development regulations, chapter three twenty-eight. They were made on Tuesday. And Ben, if you don't want to come up, you don't have to. Council, if there's no other action on this one, we'll put it before you on April twenty-fourth. Is that agreeable?
Yep.
Good, thank you. We'll move on. That's why it was just a presentation. Item four, public hearings. Item A, consideration of an ordinance to rezone point eight four acres from neighborhood commercial to multifamily residential as requested by Justin Nijem. The property is located at sixteen oh four Langford Drive. And Matt, you tell us the rest of the story.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Licker was hiding from me. We have two reselling requests under your agenda from the planning commission batch of cases. First one is by Justin Nijem for point eight four acres located at sixteen oh four Langford Drive, Amherst Langford Road, excuse me, Langford Drive. This is a few hundred feet east of the St. Augustine Road intersection. As you see on the zoning pattern on the map, it is a mixture of residential and commercial uses in the area. And as we talked about in the work session, the land use pattern is a little bit different. It's actually dominated by apartments and institutional uses. Character area, this is in the Community Activity Center character area along the north St. Augustine Road corridor, which allows for more intensive type zonings. And the irony here, as many of the R-ten zonings in the area are not intensive enough for Community Activity Center character area. Aerial imagery, you see the large apartment complex across the street to the south, commercial uses along St. Augustine Road. Three D aerial imagery puts it into a little different perspective. Subject property is vacant. See, it's the irregular triangular shape. The purpose of the rezoning, which they downzoning from C-N to R-M is to allow the development as an apartment complex with fifteen dwelling units. Boundaries survey in your packet along with the conceptual site plan showing one building proposed to be two-story, one-bedroom, one-bath apartments, seven on the top floor, eight on the ground floor. Subject property currently vacant. This is looking northward from Langford Drive. Adjacent properties to the east is the West Side Baptist Church, eastward view back at Langford, apartments across the street, westward back toward the traffic light at St. Augustine Road, and the cemetery, which is on that diamond-shaped property back there behind the subject. Again, conceptual site plan is in your packet. It's the maximum that the point eight four acres would allow in terms of apartments. This meets all of the code requirements in terms of parking and setbacks and buffer yard. It, of course, will have to go through the full plan review element process, just like in multifamily. Our planning commission reviewed this at their latest meeting. They found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, standards for exercise of zoning power are there in your packet, recommending approval by unanimous. Applicants are here. They'll be glad to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. This is a public hearing item, so if there's anybody at this time that wants to come forward and speak in favor of this request, please do so.
My name is Jimmy Cone. My office is located at eighteen oh four Plum Street, and I'm acting as the architect on this project. I have some photos of these guys. Have some of these around. This is, uh... This is photos of a project that they developed a couple of years ago that's down at the end of Bay Tree on Spring Hill, across from the veterinary clinic down there. And this project will be very, very similar to that project. Same materials, same architectural design. Those are two-bedroom, two-bath, and these are going to be one-bedroom, one-bath, what they're going to be. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. The developers, the owners of the project are here. They've got other projects in Valdosta on Bay Tree up toward the college. Their places always look real nice. They keep them well-maintained, and I'm sure they'll be doing the same thing with this project. We did go by the church and spoke to the pastor at the church, and he didn't have any objections about the apartment being next door to them. So if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or the owners can.
Council, any questions for the architect? Jimmy, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request at this time? Seeing none, is there anybody who would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning request as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in multiple seconds, all in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. Good luck. Yep. We'll move on to item B, consideration of an ordinance to rezone point five one acres from single-family residential R-ten to highway commercial CH. Sam Straka will be coming forward eventually, or not. Matt Martin to present. Hi, Matt.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This one's also rezoning, but an upzoning from R-ten to highway commercial. This is the northern half of the property that is currently split zone between R-ten and CH. The request is to make all of the properties CH. See from the zoning pattern on the map here and in your packet that it is a mixture of R-ten and CH. Character area is Community Activity Center, and similar to the other request, R-ten is simply not intensive enough for the area, which has really transitioned more to commercial-type patterns. Aerial image shows the existing house on this part of the property. It has been there about eighty years. Back then, this was a very different type of pattern. It predates the interstate and all the commercial development. But everything newly developed in the past several decades has been commercial. Directly to the west is a larger automotive repair-type facility, Sonic Restaurant, when it was opened down on Hill Avenue, and other commercial uses. Three D aerial image puts it also into perspective. The commercial part of the property is actually what is currently vacant. Boundaries survey in your packet, and it's just the northern part that's shown there in the shading. Subject property, as you see it from Maud Street, excuse, yeah, from Jordan Street, is the eastward view into where the house is located. This is the view from Maud Street. Then the commercial property has a small storage building. Adjacent properties, this is the automotive use to the west, the view down Maud Street looking westward, and the commercial building across the street, and eastward back towards St. Augustine Road. Then you have the restaurant building there on the corner. So again, a rezoning request for northern half of the property from R-ten to CH, so it's all CH. Planning commission reviewed this at their public hearing on March thirty-first, found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, standards for exercise of zoning power outlined there in your packet, and they are recommending approval by unanimous vote. Applicants are here. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Matt, I have a question. Would this, if we vote to change this, it'd still be that one R-ten?
There'll be the one lot to the east, which is different parcel, different ownership. There's a rental house, I think, that's there. It would be the last house on that part of the street.
Would they have to request the rezoning for it?
They would. They would need to make their own. They're not part of this subject property.
Could we just go ahead and rezone both of them now?
Not at the moment. They did not participate with the application.
Okay.
And same with the property across the street, which has some commercial history in the wealth. And that's where we get into an old county island area. And the pattern is more mixed as you go up through.
Any other questions for Matt?
No.
Matt, thank you. Again, a public hearing item. If there's anybody that wants to come forward and speak in favor of this request, you can do so at this time.
Straka, I am the registered agent for the owner. If there's any questions, by them.
Council. Sam, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this request at this time? Seeing none, is there anybody in opposition? Again, seeing none, Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning request as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor. Council, thank you. Sam, good luck. Thank you, guys. Move on to item five, ordinances and resolutions. Item A, consideration of a resolution to update the Georgia Fund One account contact information. Chuck Dinkins, our finance director, to present. Want to ask him about his golf game?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, as the title says, just a resolution to update the contact information on our Georgia Fund One account. The city routinely invests surplus funds in Georgia Fund One to earn a little bit extra return. The state treasurer's office requires a resolution for any changes to that account, and this simply updates our contact information and adds a couple of backup contacts to the account. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for Chuck? None? Chuck, stay close. Council, yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Chuck, return. Consideration of a resolution to open a new account with the Georgia Fund One. Chuck Dinkins again to present.
Yes, sir. This is a resolution to open a new account with Georgia Fund One for the investment of our bond proceeds. Monies are currently sitting in U.S. Bank earning very minimal interest. This would allow us to earn the same rate of return that we're currently earning on our other surplus funds. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Still accessible, though, right?
Yes, sir. We can draw it down, send them a drawdown today, have the money tomorrow.
Beautiful. Council, any questions? Chuck, thank you. Council, again, yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion. We approve the request as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Chuck, thank you. Council, thank you. Move on to item C, consideration of request from the Valdosta-Lowndes County Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the Federal Aviation Administration to proceed with construction of a general, new general aviation terminal. Richard Hardy, our city manager, will present.
Thanks, Mayor. The Valdosta-Lowndes County Airport Authority desires to proceed with the construction of a new general aviation terminal at the regional airport. There are various sources of funding for this project, which includes SPOZ, the bipartisan infrastructure law, the airport improvement program, the airport authority, and the Georgia Department of Transportation funds. The FAA bipartisan infrastructure grant is up to four million dollars. There would be no city of Valdosta funds required for this project. The FFA is preparing a bipartisan infrastructure law grant for this amount to partially fund the construction. A resolution has been prepared authorizing Mayor Scott James Matheson to accept the grant in order to process this document. Staff recommends Council approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to move forward with the funds for constructions.
Richard, thank you. Any questions for Richard or our new authority director, Tim Hood? He's out in the audience. I could call him to the podium if you want me to. None. Council, it's yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. We'll go on to item D, consideration of request from the Valdosta-Lowndes County Airport Authority to approve resolution authorizing acceptance of grant funds, this time from the airport improvement project grant, again, for the terminal.
Yes, Mayor, as you stated, this is the same type of funding request. However, this one is for the FAA Airport Improvement Project Grant, and it's up for four million, two hundred thousand dollars. There will also be no city of Valdosta funds required for this project. The FAA is preparing the improvement project grant for up to four million, two hundred thousand dollars to partially fund this construction project. The resolution has been prepared authorizing the mayor, Scott James Matheson, to accept the grant in order to process this document. Staff recommends the Council approves this resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the FAA Airport Improvement Grant Project for four million, two hundred thousand dollars.
Richard, thank you. Council, any questions for Richard? All right, Council, yours for action again.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you, Richard. Again, thank you. Move on to item six, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Council, if there's no objection, agenda items six A through six F will be considered under consent agenda. I will ask John Burton to pause after each item for your questions. John, how you doing?
Doing pretty good. How y'all?
Good, thank you.
First one is the engineering department needs to purchase a one-ton regular cab service truck with lift gate. The new vehicle will replace a twenty-four-year-old one-ton service truck. And I recommend that Langdale Ford... I recommend that Langdale Ford, well, sorry about that. I recommend that Council approve the low bid submitted by Langdale Ford in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, sixty-two dollars. Any questions?
Council, any questions on item A? John, item B?
Utilities department needs to purchase a one-ton regular cab service truck with lift gate and crane. The new vehicle will replace seventeen-year-old one-ton service truck with a crane. I recommend that Council approve the low bid submitted by Langdale Ford in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Council, any questions on item B? John?
Public Works Department needs to purchase a new skid steer loader with a bucket and grapple. The new skid steer loader will replace a twenty-four-year-old skid steer loader. I recommend that Council approve the low bid submitted by Bobcat of Valdosta in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Council, any questions on this item? John, keep going.
Engineering department needs to purchase a two-ton crew cab service truck with lift gate. The new vehicle will replace a twenty-one-year-old two-ton crew cab service truck with a lift gate. I recommend that Council approve the low bid meeting specifications submitted by Langdale Ford in the amount of seventy-five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars.
Council, any questions on this item? John, go on to the...
E? Engineering, the engineering department needs to purchase a new skid steer loader in, with a combination bucket. It's a multipurpose bucket. The new skid steer loader will replace a twenty-two-year-old skid steer loader. I recommend that Council approve the low bid submitted by Bobcat of Valdosta in the amount of seventy-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
Council, any questions on E? John, keep going. Thank you.
Utilities department needs to purchase a new dump truck. Currently, the utilities department doesn't have a large single-axle dump truck and often needs to borrow a large dump truck for long periods of time from the Public Works Department or the engineering department. I recommend that Council approve the low bid submitted by Peterbilt of Atlanta in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars.
And Council, any questions on this one? John, you're free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, by consent, A through F is now before you.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve biz A through F as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. John, again, thank you. Move on to item G, consideration of a request to approve a professional design service proposal for utility rehab and improvements for the Lakeland Highway lift station and the sanitary sewer main outfall. I'm reading it all so that Ben O'Dowd can get up here, our unbelievable engineer.
All right, then. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. This is the design services proposal for the rehab of the Lakeland Highway lift station as well as the installation of a great deal of force main and gravity sewer. This in conjunction with the bids that we opened today for the Knights Creek trunk line rehab that my department bid specification will finalize the Knights Creek North project y'all are familiar with from the bond sessions. For a little bit of history, the city experienced emergency repair after a section of this line broke near the intersection of Knights Creek and US eighty-four. We completed the emergency repair of the failed section, and there is a section of pipe that was deteriorated near the end of the scope of work for the emergency repair. City has been bypass, technical bypass since then. This work is north of there. This will finalize, redo this hole. This is part of the original Knights Creek trunk line that was installed in nineteen seventy-six. It was a combination of clay pipe, inductile iron. There's a great deal of hydrogen sulfide gas in the ground of the pipe as we discussed on Thursday. Our solution will make better use of the city infrastructure that we have in place, be a more environmentally resilient solution, involving force main through the wetland rather than gravity sewer. See the breakdown for the design services proposal. This is what we're paying for, so we're paying for one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars lump sum for survey, two fifteen for engineering, one oh eight for environmental, ten thousand for bidding support, grand total of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Four hundred and eighty-five thousand, ten dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Council, any questions for Ben? Ben, thank you. Council, yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the request as stated.
Second.
Good motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Move on to item H, consideration of request to approve a professional design service proposal for evaluation of the Knights Creek sanitary sewer trunk line.
Yes, sir. This is a technical evaluation portion of the Knights Creek trunk line from high end for ADM all the way south to the plant. The consultant will perform a technical evaluation of the condition of all of the manholes between point A and point B. They will utilize relatively new technology, basically drop a sonar ball into this pipe, they float it downstream. It takes little sonar snapshots of the line all the way down. It allows us to confirm pipe size, material, shows us where any sections are in advanced deterioration so that we can kind of get ahead of those. This kind of, as we discussed on Tuesday, this, this work and this proposal allows us to kind of take a, take a look into the dark, see what we're working with, see if there's anything that we need to address immediately. Immediate repairs tend to impact the overall execution of design, so this will inform the basis for the design for the replacement of the southern portion of Knights Creek trunk line. Again, from ADM, you're familiar, over there south of US eighty-four, about twenty-four hundred feet south of eighty-four Knights Creek, that's where, that point, all the way south to... Any questions on that?
Council. None? All right, Council, yours for action again.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Ben, another one, consideration of request to approve relocation agreement for payment to Georgia Power for the Jerry Jones Drive and Eager Road Widening Project.
Yes, sir. So this is, as you can see, the breakdown there. I've also attached the prior rights report, which is the technical supporting document for the requirement of payment. As you all are aware, based on our discussions on Tuesday, city is in a franchise agreement with Georgia Power, which entitles them to compensation for any relocation based on project criteria for roadway widening projects. The city is responsible for where we do not provide Georgia Power sufficient right-of-way or easement to locate their infrastructure. We are responsible for the payment of forty-seven point eight-five percent of the reimbursable expenses. All this is broken down in the prior rights report. Engineering department staff have gone and done a detailed review of this. We've met with Georgia Power to confirm the accuracy of these documents, make sure that they're being adequately explained, detail to staff, so for sure what we're paying. But this is the agreement between the city and Georgia Power for the payment upon completion of the work, and this is a not-to-exceed amount. As we discussed on Tuesday, this is different from GDOT's non-binding pre-let estimates, which are subject to change based on bids. This is Georgia Power's guarantee of a top end. Comes in under this, then we pay less, but this is the maximum amount. This is paid upon completion. Any other questions for me on this?
Council, any on this? Ben, thank you. Council, yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the Georgia Power relocation agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Move on to item seven, local funding and requests. Item A, consideration of request to approve a broker to provide supplemental benefit services for the city of Valdosta employers, employees, and ancillary voluntary benefits plan. Hi, Jenny Boyer, how you doing?
Hi, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is a request to approve a new broker of record for the city's supplemental insurance benefits. The selected broker will assist city staff in evaluating and selecting the most appropriate carriers and product lines for the supplemental benefits that we offer to our employees. The city received five qualified responses to our RFP. The responses were reviewed and scored by a committee that included Assistant City Manager Katherine Ammons, Finance Director Chuck Dinkins, Councilman Tim Carroll, Councilman Eric Howard, and myself. After scoring all the proposals, the committee identified One Digital as the top-rated firm, and we are recommending approval of One Digital to serve as the broker of record for the city's supplemental benefit. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Council, questions for Jenny? None? Jenny, thank you. Council, it's yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Jenny, thank you. Item B, consideration of request to approve the Valdosta On-Demand Safety Plan. Larry Ogden, our Public Works Director, to present. How you doing, Larry?
Good and yourself?
Fantastic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Valdosta On-Demand Safety Plan, City of Valdosta Safety Plan Program is governed by the City General Safety Inspection Program and the City of Valdosta Safety Committee Manual. It was revised in October nineteenth, two thousand eighteen. This is a standard safety plan that we must review and update once a year. We're a tad bit late because we had to issue getting the contract with VIA renewed from FTA, GDOT, and VIA. But once we got everything approved through those agencies, we were given the okay to go ahead and bring our safety plan to council. Safety plan must be voted on and approved by council so that we will continue to receive our 5307 funding. As long as we have a safety plan in place, it gives the city guidelines to who will operate in what position, responsible for what. This makes sure we're in compliance with the ordinance for the Federal Transit Administration and the Georgia Department of Transportation. But with that being said, I recommend that we approve the Valdosta On-Demand Safety Plan. Have to take any questions you have.
Counsel, any questions? Please, here.
I don't, it's not about the grant, but I was just wondering on this, do we have any leeway as to where we can travel to? Because I had some people from Moody asking about Valdosta On-Demand. I had some people from Wild Adventures asking about Valdosta On-Demand. I didn't know we had any leeway where we could add some of those places in our.
Right, nonetheless, written, we can only transport or operate within city limits. There are a few pockets outside the city limits that was approved, which is Y grass, the Walmart marketplace out on Beamer's Road. So those were approved for us to travel, which are considered the non-UZ zones. But when we do our month, our annual report, we have to document those miles traveled outside the non-UZ zones. So there are very few Y grass, Walmarts. So since VIA doesn't track that information, we have to put in a percentage. And I think this last year, we put in like point one percent, so we had to calculate those miles. Now, there are some discussions with NPO. They would like to expand the services of VIA. They would like to try to bridge the program they're using in the county with our program. But those are still some discussions taking place now, so there's nothing to finalize.
Thank you.
Keep those two in mind, though, when you are, you are in discussions with them, please. Thank you, Larry. Any other questions for Larry? Larry, thank you. Counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this presentation as presented.
Second.
Motion at a second. All in favor? Show of hands. Thank you. Counsel, Larry, thank you. Move on to consideration of request to purchase a new micro bar screen for the Mud Creek Water Pollution Control Plant. Keep those rags out of our system. Jason Barnes, our utilities director, again to present.
Evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
This is a purchase of new bar screen for the Mud Creek Water Pollution Control Plant. The Influent Wet Well has been in service since nineteen seventy-seven with upgrades and replacements that were made in nineteen eighty-six and two thousand eleven. The Influent Micro Screen is a filter that removes the big solid objects from the wastewater. It's a type of screen that removes like the rags, plastics, papers, metals from any flowing water. By removing the large solids, we can prevent damage and unnecessary wear and tear on the equipment. At this time, there is no micro screen used at the Mud Creek, only two bar screens, which is three to six millimeter spacing. This one's going to be a two-millimeter spacing, so it will get more, remove more material from the waste stream from the current treatment and future treatment processes that are set forth by Georgia EPD. So the staff recommends approving the sole source quote submitted by Cornerstone H2O in the amount of $279,900. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, questions for Jason? Jason, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion. We approve the request as stated.
Second.
Motion at a second. All in favor? Show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Move on to item D, consideration of request to approve the acquisition of a payment and performance bond, the AMI contract. Chuck Dinkins again to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed Tuesday, this is a payment performance bond on the installation of endpoints in the AMI system. Essentially, it's an insurance policy to make sure that the work is done completely and correctly and protects the city against the contractor and the subcontractors thereof. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Only sad that Ms. Coate's not here. She'd have a tear in her eye right now. Counsel, any questions? Nope. Chuck, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, yours for action.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Motion at a second. All in favor? Show of hands. Counsel, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the citizens to be heard portion of the meeting. We ask you to come forward and state your name and address so we can have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes, so all have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to counsel as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of counsel in debate. It's our policy to follow through with you and your concern. We also ask any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to again ensure all can be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens to be heard tonight? Please come forward. Hi Bobby.
Bobby McKenzie, five-one-four-eight Northwind Boulevard. Sea Click Fix reports have largely fallen on deaf ears. Here's a hundred and eighty sea click fixes, just from the fire station to East Park Avenue down to the Lee Street, North Ashley Pond. They have fallen on deaf ears over a range of four years. And asking for multiple citizens for the flooding in the area, the trash in the area, about the, you have dumpsters up at feet from the drainage ditches, sitting on top of storm drains. We have an example of a work order that was put in on Sea Click Fix, and it was closed out four times. Four times between Public Works Department, I don't know who it was because their title was Public Works Department, and three times by city marshals as fixed and no action taken. The insistence of that being fixed would be to reopen and reopen and reopen, and it took a year for those dumpsters got screened. And you all have it within your power to change those dumpsters and empty those dumpsters with frequency and get those dumpsters screened and move them so that they're not polluting those when it floods over there. And that's, that's in one of these one hundred and eighty click fixes that have been reported. It just fallen on deaf ears. Stormwater has said that there's, they have a contractor that's paid $200,000 for thirty-three miles of canal that's cleaned up, picked up, and that stormwater contract is constantly cutting the grass and not picking up the trash. Not just over there by the fire station too, but it trackles all the way down to the Lee Street, the Begga Mark, to the Lee Street Pond, North Ash Street, even on the south side. Even on the south side, it was Sea Click Fix reported that the south side Stormwater Pond over there was full of trash, and then Angela Bray said, hey, we'll get the contractor out there to clean it. But instead, going back to your CD beat on your March vision, there's a nice little article about the Cub Scouts going out there and cleaning it up and working with Stormwater. Instead of holding the Stormwater account, holding the contractor accountable, Stormwater sent out Cub Scouts, kids, to go pick up what somebody, adults are getting paid $200,000 to pick up, and the kids, she sent kids out there to pick it up for free. Not only that, it's continually falling on deaf ears that even at the Stafford parking lot over there where Hobby Lobby is in St. Augustine, it's been reported for four years. Got all the click fixes right here. And Stormwater Management took a paid crew on duty for Love Your Rivers Tour to go out there and clean up a private property. There's been multiple avenues of multiple click fix reports that have been reported, have just pushed back and resisted and pushed back and resisted by the city staff. I've engaged with many of you on those, and they're where they're elevated to the EPD. And I got several of the EPD where, where you, Mayor, and me, Mr. Carroll, came out, and it's also recorded in your CD beat as a, as a positive win in your CD beat. But it was reported to the EPA. It's the only reason why that cleanup ever took place. So please, please, you guys push.
We'll follow up with you. Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll close out this portion of the evening and move on to the city manager's report.
Thanks again, Mayor. Mayor, we have a lot of things taking place this weekend and throughout the rest of April, starting tomorrow. We start the April eleventh through the twelfth, our third annual Bluesberry Festival. Join us at Unity Park for the, for this event featuring live music, food, vendors, family, friend, and fun. Tomorrow is five PM to ten PM, Saturday from ten AM to ten PM. On Saturday, your favorite, April nineteenth, the sixth annual Mayor and Chairman's Paddle. Meet at the, meet at eight PM at the Troopville Boat Ramp next to exit eighteen off of I-75. Paddle alongside Mayor Matheson and Lowndes County Chairman Bill Slaughter down the scenic waterways of South Georgia. Just to make sure everyone's aware, April eighteenth, Good Friday, our city offices will be closed. City of Valdosta Administrative Office will be closed in observance of Good Friday. April the twenty-first to the twenty-sixth, we will be celebrating our Georgia Cities and Neighborhood Development Week. We'll be, we'll be celebrating this. The mayor and I will kick off things with a fun basketball game at the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center. Stay tuned for all of the other events scheduled throughout the week. April the twenty-sixth, love where you live, road cleanup. Invite each and every one of you out to help participate in this event. This event, we make sure that we clean up some of these areas that individuals litter to continue to make our neighborhoods look, and our city looks clean. This will take place Saturday, April the twenty-sixth, from nine AM to eleven AM. Meet at sixteen-ten Northside Drive, the Dollar General parking lot. This month's cleanup will cover Barack Obama Boulevard from Northside Drive to Pine View Drive. Gloves, bags, supplies will be provided by the city. Thank you. That's all I have.
Richard, thank you. Move on to counsel comments. Counsel, start down at you, Thomas.
Well, I'd just like to start by saying how pleased I am with this new audiovisual system. I think it was a long time coming, and it's got a beautiful interface. It definitely gives a better experience for online, and I'm glad we finally got here, you know, and it's on the heels of transitioning from chisel and stone in HR to a good platform. And now, like I was speaking with the mayor about earlier, I had an hour and a half Zoom meeting about AI, and it's, it's powerful. I mean, and the mayor already uses it, and I was kind of blown away. I thought I was, I thought I was up to speed on a lot of things that were going on, and I'm not. And I'm pretty sure that if we took a good look at it, we can make life easier for the employees of the city of Valdosta, especially our department head, the city manager, and even the council.
I agree. Right down to proposals. You're right.
Yeah, mhm.
I'd rather speak for myself.
Sorry?
I'd rather speak for myself. You can have all the AI.
It does, Mr. Lee.
I'm good.
I'll slow down just enough to thank Andy for filling in on Tuesday. It gave me a chance to sit and watch our presentation, and this is another level of transparency. This is a very clear, concise presentation of sight and sound of our council meetings, and I couldn't, couldn't have been more impressed. So you're right, Thomas, and counsel, you're all stars. You can be seen and heard completely as well. Tim?
We'll see if that's a good thing.
Yeah, we'll see. I like it.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Just want to say thank you for everybody who attended and supported the event on this past Saturday, the Dancing With The Stars. We were able to raise over sixty-something thousand dollars for the arts department, the College of Arts over at VSU. So that was a very good turnout, and thanks for the support.
And thank you. Thank you individually raised eighty-five hundred dollars.
Yep.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor, without objection, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Thank you. We stand adjourned.